Good evening, and welcome to this board meeting for Tuesday, January 18th. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and administer the oath of office for Ms. McCarthy.
I, Kelly McCarthy, do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a member of the Board of Education of the North Ridgeville City School District in the county of Ohio to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be adapted during my continuance in said office until my successor is elected and qualified. So you're so welcome. It's a pleasure to be here. Look forward to serving with all of you.
Mr. Grigsby, here.
This is McCarthy.
Here.
This is Saxon.
Here.
This is Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here. Finalization of the agenda, is there anything to add or delete?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on December 7th, 2021, and December 21st, 2021.
No, second.
Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby. Yes. This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. We will move right into the superintendent's treasurer's report.
Welcome to 2022, by far my favorite meeting of the year. As you all know, or may not know in the public, January is Board of School Board Recognition Month in the state of Ohio. And tonight, we wanted to take a moment to honor our five board members. And these individuals here have dedicated, are dedicated to the mission of leading an innovative and collaborative district focused on the development of the whole child to ensure success. Over these last two years, it has not been easy to be in your role. It has been exceptionally challenging, and all of you have been consistently focused on providing the best education possible to our students, and we are so appreciative. Before each of our buildings come to show their appreciation, it is my pleasure to introduce Mayor Kevin Corcoran is here tonight to present the board with a proclamation on behalf of the city of North Ridgeville.
Good evening, everybody. Fancy stuff first. It's a proclamation, and as always, they start off with a bunch of whereas's, and I'll start that way as well. Whereas, the mission of our public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, and to empower them to become competent and productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world. And whereas, local school board members are committed to our children and believe that all children can be successful learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas, local school board members work closely with the parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas, the local school, school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. And now therefore, I, Mayor Kevin Corcoran, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the North Ridgeville School Board, proclaim the month of January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month in North Ridgeville, or urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members, and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today and tomorrow's children. And with that, a personal note, I appreciate all the work that we do together, the partnership that we have with the city and the school board, and I congratulate you all for the work that you do in your position. I know it's not easy, especially these days, more than ever, but congratulations and good luck.
And I would just echo what the mayor said. We do absolutely appreciate the partnership with the city, and mayor, thank you for taking your time tonight. See you later. In addition to my sincere thanks, you know, we do have several building administrators who are here tonight also to show their appreciation. And so I introduce Andrea Vance from the Early Childhood Learning Committee.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
In honor of the School Board Appreciation Month, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for all that you do for our community. We know that you give countless hours for our students, staff, and our community, and we appreciate everything that you all do. I'm also, I'm always looking to have a great video to be able to show our kids, but I really was so intrigued by all of the students and all of their writing this year with our new units of study program that we've been implementing for the last three years, and looking at this writing, and I will tell you overwhelmingly, you will enjoy these, so I'm going to share these with you tonight as a thank you. And I do want to point out, as I just kind of passed some of these around, that the two things that they were the most thankful for were winter and summer break. And, and they also enjoyed, they also, oh, sorry. They also enjoyed talking about riding the bus home. And then we also have from Mrs. Barbrick's class who just shared, you are hands down the best board, thanks for all you do. As well, but we just wanted to take that opportunity just to share, and you'll see in some of those cards too, we asked, we kind of explained and talked to students, and we asked them about things that they thought that you did. And so some of the pictures are very interesting. So much, and again, we appreciate all you do for, again, our community, our students, and our staff. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Heffron from Liberty.
Hello, Board of Education. My name's Mitch Heffron. I'm the principal of Liberty Elementary, for all those of you at home. Before, I want to thank the Board of Education. I'd like to summarize the past two years, if you don't mind.
I'm scared.
Two years ago, we went from an average school year to having everything that we know in education turned upside down. And we quickly had to adjust teachers, parents, students, school board, administration, everyone, and everything we do about education had changed. We needed to ask teachers to teach on Zoom and to be online only within a short amount of time. The Board of Education, to ensure that all students would have access to an education because of this online format, ensured that every student in our district had access to technology device, and if parents not have interconnection, internet connection in their homes, ensured that these parents had internet connection so we could adjust. The Board agreed to hire additional staff, by the way, thank you for that, for my building, during this difficult time, to ensure when we went back in person as fast as we possibly could, that we were able to do it in the safest way possible, ensuring that students were six feet apart. When the Health Department did an investigation of our building and walked through, they reported to me that this was one of the most safe districts that they have been in Moray County. By the way, we set up our classrooms. The Board of Education agreed to purchase a Zoom license, which I'm sure was not cheap for the whole entire district, and countless other programs to help make the online instruction even more interactive for our students. The district worked hard to ensure that students were in school as fast as possible, and we maintained a hybrid format all last year, which was not an easy task, changing bus routes, changing school buildings, creating new schedules in each building, changing the curriculum to fit all the different change needs. They also ensured that our concerned parents that were not comfortable with coming back in the hybrid format had an online-only option as well. And also, at that time, hired additional staff to be able to support that. The Board funded an after-school tutoring program for two years now to ensure that our students that were falling further behind would had the opportunity to catch up. The Board of Education carefully addressed the changing recommendations to ensure that we could keep our students in school whilst keeping them safe as possible. These past two years have tested and challenged our country, schools, families, and children. Parents having to find childcare, helping students at home, doing schoolwork for the, especially the younger kiddos. Teachers teaching online for the first time, fear of sending kids to school, fear of kids' social emotional status keeping them at home. Teachers scared to bring home COVID to their families. Anger and disagreement over the mask mandate. Anger and frustration of having kids wear masks and not wear masks. Working through the labor shortage, working together, teachers and parents in this community, I've seen, I can't tell you how much I've seen my teachers work together to help each other. Administrators, parents, all chipping in. I know there's been a lot of emotions over these past two years, but I promise you, the good and love that I've seen in our community outweigh any negative that we have encountered. Throughout the past two years, one thing has remained consistent, and that is that the North Ridgeville Board of Education has demonstrated a passion for balancing safety and wanting the students and families and teachers to have a comfortable working environment that they feel comfortable in and to educate our children. We can disagree on procedures in our society. However, no one can deny the Board of Education here in North Ridgeville has the best intentions for our city, neighbors, and students. Thank you, Board of Education.
Mr. Michael King.
For those of you at home, that was Mitch Heffron. Thank you, thank you very much for letting us come here. I sat in your shoes 20 years ago, but I could never do the work that you're doing today. The work of 20 years ago had its ups and downs, arguments, discussions, needs for money, needs for better standards, different standards, more care, less care, more classrooms, less classrooms, et cetera. But as Mitch had mentioned, with the work that you have done in the last two years has been just amazing, because no matter what decision was the best, there was still somebody telling you it wasn't. But true leadership is rising to that occasion to make those decisions, not caring about what those people are saying behind your back. So thank you so much for taking that courage to leave. Thank you for everything that you've let me become a part of. For our recognition to the board, we had an awesome committee of great planner who is going to share out what we did, Nikki Roth and Rebecca Mayling.
Good evening, board members, good to see you all.
Welcome, Mr. Grigsby. Good to see you.
Our, behind you, you'll see a banner that is from our school district, or rather, our school and our students. Represented on that banner are 75 hands that represent the 75 homerooms at the Academic Center. Each one of our homerooms took the opportunity to write a small message, and each of the students in those homerooms signed their name to show their appreciation for all that you do. We know that you work behind the scenes, and our students don't really get to see you very often, but it was important for us that they understand what you do, that they understand the incredible impact you have on everything that happens in this school district. And we just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. So as Mr. King mentioned, Nikki Roth helped create this project and consult on the design, Rebecca Mayling, our director of our fab lab, took the time to help format the banner and print it out. And here we have the originals of all the notes that the students wrote and all of their original signatures, so I will leave those with you to pass around and read as well, and we thank you again for all that you do for our district.
It's the only way we could do high fives with the entire student body. Thanks again, thank you. Next up from the high school is Jamie Loromo.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you on behalf of NRHS. I know yours has not been an easy job, especially these past couple of years, and we want you to know you are very much appreciated. And congratulations to you, Mr. Grigsby, on being able, welcome. And I have a video, and then I come bearing a few tokens of appreciation. We have cards from the arts department, and we have coasters that were designed in our woodslap.
On behalf of the athletic department, I want to thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate all of your support, thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education, for all you do and the support. Hi, board members, thank you for everything you do for the students and the staff. Thank you for all of your support, we appreciate you. Hi, Board of Ed members, thank you, Happy Appreciation Day. We appreciate all that you do for our district. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, the Board of Education, the North Ridgeville students really appreciate you.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, everyone on the board, for everything you do.
Thank you to our Board of Education, and thank you for all that you do for us here at North Ridgeville High School and North Ridgeville City School District.
Thank you to the Board of Education for all you do for our school, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Board of Education, for all that you do, we really appreciate you, and have a great day, thank you.
Thank the Board of Education for everything that they do.
Thank you to the board for everything you do for us, for the students and for the faculty and staff.
Thank you, Board of Education, for all you do, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Board of Education, we appreciate everything that you do.
Unfortunately, Coach Durkin was unable to be with us tonight, but she will be present at the next board meeting, and she does have items that were created by the students and their fab lab, and she is excited to share those with the board. I do want to take a moment to thank each of our building administrators for your creative ideas, to thank our board. Certainly, our students and staff do appreciate all that you do, and it's hard to put that in words in a project, but every year, you all are very creative and surprise us all, so thank you. And finally, on behalf of the entire staff of North Ridgeville City Schools, we do have certificates of recognition from the Ohio School Boards Association, who also recognize and honor your service. And before I wrap up, I do want to thank Sam Amin for coordinating all these efforts, working with our building principals, and really making tonight happen. And just as a final thought, I am truly honored to work alongside each and every member of our dedicated and caring staff, including our Board of Education. And I thank you for all that you have done and what I know you will continue to do on behalf of our students, staff, and community of North Ridgeville.
Thank you to everybody, you have no idea how much is appreciated. But it's easy to be supportive in a district and stand alongside a group of individuals that are so dedicated to this community and to these kids. You've, we've stood alongside of you through this pandemic, and I've had the honor of serving 14 years plus now, and other individuals here, Mr. Grigsby has an opportunity to join us. But truly, it is a partnership in the level of dedication from all of you, from the administration on down to teachers and cleaners and bus drivers. You've all been nothing short of amazing. So it's easy to support that when we see the love and commitment you have for these kids from kindergarten on through senior high. To see posts on Facebook of people reaching out to teachers from years ago shows the level and dedication and the impact that you all make on a daily basis in our buildings. So again, thank you for January, but none of this would be possible without all of you, here in the trenches, day in and day out. And we might be a support piece, but you're really doing all the hard work, and we thank you, and thank you, and thank you for that.
We have a few more recognitions this evening, and I will once again turn it over to Andrea Vance at ECL to recognize and honor our January Students of the Month.
So I have the opportunity to recognize two Students of the Month. Our first Student of the Month that we'll start with is Calvin Joker, and Calvin is in Miss Jane's preschool classroom. And Miss Jane writes that Calvin comes to school each day, ready to learn and grow. He is a pleasure to have in class and never hesitates to help his teachers or other peers. He puts forth effort in all he does and is always kind to others. He is absolutely a joy to have in the classroom, and she is honored to be his teacher. Keep up the great work, Calvin. Next, I have Lily Lasky, and Lily is in Mrs. Groff's class, and she is in kindergarten. Lily always comes to school to Mrs. Groff's room with a smile and a hug to start her day, and that's truly with everyone she sees. She has made excellent progress this year and continues to grow each and every day. She always tries her best and loves to be independent. We are so proud of how far she has come, and we look forward to seeing her excel even more in the future. Way to go, Lily. Next, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce Mr. Heffron from Liberty.
Hello, everyone, and it is my pleasure to introduce two of our Students of the Month at Liberty Elementary. Our first is a first grader from Mr. Ditzler's class, and her name is Riley Darden. Riley is a great example of Ranger strong behavior. She always tries her hardest in class. Even when she doesn't have the right answer, she perseveres and still gives it her all. She's a great example of somebody who demonstrates excellent behavior all day long. Way to go, Riley. Awesome job, Riley. Our next Student of the Month is a second grader from Mrs. Sharp's class, and his name is Otto Clivenger. Otto models Ranger strong behavior to all of his peers every day. He's always willing to help everyone around him. He demonstrates perseverance, learning new things, and never gives up in a challenge. He's always kind and helpful. Congratulations, Otto. And that are my Students of the Month, congratulations to them. And it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Michael King.
Hey. The Academic Center is very pleased to recognize the following. The first up for our Students of the Month from third grade is Charlotte Geiger. Charlotte is being recognized for being a hardworking student that has grown immensely in her skills. She has risen to many new challenges and continues to practice being a model third grade student within our classroom. She is polite, kind, and continues to achieve her goals with pride. And she brings her own strong, congratulations, Charlotte. Next up, we have Giselle Suliman from the sixth grade. Gigi, as she is known, is a hardworking, diligent, focused young lady. She is always kind and goes out of her way to give compliments to students and staff. Gigi is always concerned for her fellow peers and wants to help anyone she can. Gigi loves to learn and never gives up when learning something new. Great work, Gigi. From eighth grade, we have Eric Hansen. Eric is an amazing young man, he comes to school every day, ready to learn, participate in class, he is always willing to answer questions or read when asked. Eric is a great friend that is willing to help anyone when they need it. Eric is a great Ranger strong leader. We are so happy that he is in our classroom. Last but not, definitely not least, is Chucky, my eighth grade. If you look up the word "service" in the dictionary, you would find a picture of Chucky. He is a great helper throughout the building, especially in the cafeteria, not just on occasion, but he is a great helper daily. He can always be found with a smile on his face and sharing a sincere good morning with all the key encounters. Thank you for being a great example of Ranger strong. Chucky probably outworks us all. He doesn't miss a beat, and he, he will do the things that you think of after the fact, while you're trying to think about it.
Sounds already done it.
These folks are just amazing. And so at this time, pinch hitting for Ranger High Tech is Lee Armbruster, Coordinator of Community Partnerships and Educational Opportunities.
Good evening, everyone, I'm happy to be here for Coach Durkin. It's nice to see everybody, and thank you all very much for everything you do. I am excited to be here tonight and recognize our two learners over at High Tech Academy. First, we have Elle Lawson, Elle is in grade three in the third grade, and Carly Samuelson recommended her for Student of the Month. Elle exemplifies being Ranger strong every day to her coaches, classmates, and school as a whole. She goes above and beyond to make sure she is respectful and kind. She sets goals and does not give up until she reaches her goals. She is driven and determined, she's a wonderful teammate, and makes sure her teammates feel supported and included during her PBLs. Elle's a wonderful learner and an asset to our class. I'm so lucky to be Elle's teacher, and I'm excited to watch her grow, grow and thrive at RHTA this year. Way to go, Elle, keep up the amazing work, your coaches are so proud of you. And our second learner is Joel Shuff. Joel is in the eighth grade, and he was nominated by Jennifer Dutchmar. Joe, I think he was by Joey. Joey is one of the best people I have ever had the privilege of working with. When, over the past three years, I observed that he is always positive and respectful in every interaction he has with learners and with his coaches. He greets people in the hallways with a smile and a kind word instead of ignoring them. He actively tries to engage reluctant partners to think with him during our ELA enrichment book, block. Not only is he just a wonderful and kind human, he is open to try anything and has a positive mindset that allows him to address challenges. He applies excellent critical thinking and problem solving throughout his learning, which is a great strength in a learner. Joey seeks intellectual challenge through his participation in activities such as mock trial, the Great Lakes Science Center design, and building challenges. I just love working with him, but since he can be so quiet, I think he can blend into the background. I hope that he realizes how much his coaches appreciate his presence at school, and I look forward to hearing about his successes and adventures when he moves on to the high school and even, even beyond. Thank you, and congratulations to both of those students. And now I'm happy to introduce Jamie Loromo from the high school.
Must be a sibling. Emma Shuff is an obvious choice for January Student of the Month. Her teachers helped select her because of her leadership qualities and because she demonstrates the qualities of Ranger strong with her kindness and care for others, and because she goes above and beyond in her work. Emma, a senior, has followed a challenging curriculum.
Emma, a senior, has followed a challenging curricular curriculum during her time at N R H S with a course load of several honors and A P courses, all while maintaining a high GPA. Her favorite courses currently are A P Calc and A P Lit. Emma has been on the N R H S volleyball team for at least three years. She has also participated in the Anti-Bully Club, VarCity R, Prom Committee, French Club, and Student Council. Her dream college is John Carroll University, and her dream job is to become an elementary school teacher, which I love. Her spirit animal is a brown bear. I found this interesting because, as we know, brown bears are thought of as cute and cuddly, but they should never be underestimated. Her leadership abilities, Emma will make a wonderful teacher. I am honored to present her as one of our two N R H S Students of the Month for January. Our next Student of the Month, another senior, Brayden Di Matteo. Brayden is an obvious choice also for January Student of the Month. His teachers helped select him because he demonstrates the qualities of Ranger strong by being an incredibly hard worker. He was genuinely kind to his peers, and he is respectful towards his teachers. Brayden has followed a challenging curriculum during his time at N R H S with a course load of several honors and A P courses, all while maintaining a high GPA. His current course load includes A P Literature and Composition and A P Macroeconomics. He has selected a well-rounded range of electives during high school, ranging from culinary fundamentals to photography to basic electricity. His favorite course currently is Business Law with Mr. Ruthner. Brayden's dream college is the Ohio State University, and he dreams of becoming a lawyer. Outside of school, he enjoys kickboxing. So I am honored to introduce him as one of our two N R H S Students of the Month.
Once again, congratulations to all of our Students of the Month. Our next recognition, I will turn it over to Mrs. Hostetler, who will present our staff members for January.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you to the board. What a wonderful tribute that was to watch at the beginning for all the difficult decisions that you've had to make and all the support that you afford to all of us. So thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate two staff members for their positive impact on our district. Their selection is based on input from their colleagues as to why they are deserving of this recognition. I am proud to announce Amy Franklin and Nicole Kitchen as the January Staff Members of the Month. Mrs. Amy Franklin was hired as a lever placement guidance counselor at the Academic Center in June of 2019, where she has worked as a school counselor ever since. Prior to coming to N R C S, Mrs. Franklin worked as a K eight guidance counselor at Constellation Schools in Alirica. She was also a camp director for a youth organization in the greater Cleveland area, organizing and overseeing week-long summer heats. One of Mrs. Franklin's nominators stated the following about why she deserved to be recognized as the Staff Member of the Month. Mrs. Franklin is the epitome of what a school counselor should be. She has a calm and empathetic demeanor that builds trust and relationships with her students and coworkers. She is amazing and always puts a smile on your face when you see her. Another nominator stated the following. Amy has gone above and beyond for both students and staff this year. Her willingness to take on additional responsibilities and collaborate with staff, all while providing mental and emotional support for our most vulnerable populations, makes her a valuable and essential part of our district. Throughout it all, she has maintained a positive attitude and encourages the rest of us to remain positive as well. Congratulations, Amy, and thank you for all that you have done for our students and staff at the Academic Center. Our Support Staff Member of the Month is Nicole Kitchen. Mrs. Kitchen was hired as a paraprofessional instructional aide in October of 2019 in the intensive needs classroom at Liberty Elementary. Prior to Mrs. Kitchen's hire, she was a substitute paraprofessional, working primarily with our special needs students and was an active parent volunteer here in North Ridgeville. Mrs. Kitchen's nominee stated the following kind words and explained why she deserved to be selected as the Staff Member of the Month. Nicole has gone out of her way every single day of school year to take initiative and treat the students in D six as her own. As a first-year teacher, it is scary and challenging to find your groove, but Nicole has been such a huge help in making me feel supported and helping wherever she can. Not only does she excel at reinforcing academic skills with students at her center, but she brings her own new and interesting ideas to the table to help our classroom function as a team, whether they are activity ideas, centers materials, new classroom management strategies, or even just little things here and there that make things easier and more efficient in our classroom. She treats the students in D six with so much love and compassion, as if they were her own children. The students in D six know that they are safe and loved, which is truly the most important thing, and Nicole plays a huge role in that. Nicole is such a wonderful member of our D six crew, and we couldn't do it without her. Congratulations, Nicole, and thank you for your dedication to our students and for your mentorship of our new staff members. Once again, I would like to congratulate Amy Franklin and Nicole Kitchen for being named the January Staff Members of the Month. You are both wonderful examples of the great staff members in our
Thank you, Mrs. Hostetler. Congratulations to both Amy and Nicole. Again, we are so very fortunate to have these amazing students and staff members that we are able to recognize here with the Board of Education. Our next report is from the high school, and I'd like to welcome back to the podium Mrs. Lormo, who would like to talk to the Board of Education about some of the great things happening at North Ridgeville High School.
Couple times. So your staff and students have been very, very busy in N R H S. And when I thought about how to kind of summarize all of that, this is how I chose to do that. First off, Rangers are back. That was kind of a big theme at the beginning of the year, not only at the high school, I'm sure, but throughout the district. So those are some of the pictures from the beginning of the year, welcoming our seniors. Of course, students getting to go to a game, the band performing, all of those great things. Then the next slide, all the teachers were back for in-person instruction, so that was very exciting. And we had some shirts to start off our first days of school so that all of our students, we were really thinking about our students to, hadn't even been to the high school yet, so that they would recognize staff members right away. And then, just as important, student activities are back. We did a play in the fall. I know now we're working on, the Drama Club is working on Shrek. And it really hit me down on the left there when I went to a choir performance, and Mrs. Sarah Miller said to the audience, this is the first time in over eighteen months that they've performed in front of a live audience. So, you know, that was really good news. So all of our activity, activities, Halloween costume contest, all of those things are back. So to kind of summarize all of the other work that's going on at the high school, I decided to kind of hinge them onto three areas of focus. So the first area of focus is, first off, what do we want for our students at N R H S? Well, we want all students to attend a school where their social and emotional well-being and personal development is as important as academics. So to this end, we've done a lot of work. Just today, we did an Alice drill. We brought in law enforcement professionals to help us out with that. We've really rebooted Ranger strong. We've had patience with our students this year, understanding that they've been out of in-person school for, you know, that period of time. Character strong, of course, that's been implemented during our Ranger seminar. At the beginning of the year, we did High School 101, again, to that point of recognizing that students hadn't been in school for a while. We wanted to welcome them back, but also remind them of how we do school, right? Because they haven't been in school for a while. Also, P P I S, we are in the process of the implementation of P P I S with the help of Leon Armbruster. She's been involved in that process. Also, Students of the Month, we do eight Students of the Month each month, and then I highlight the seniors here. And then, Good News Cards. We've been sending out notes each month at our faculty meeting. I pass out two Good News Cards, and they write special notes to students. I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that. I think that's much appreciated by students and families. And then trying to improve communications with weekly newsletters out to parents and then a weekly bulletin to staff. The second thing we want for students at N R H S is that we want all students to receive a guaranteed curriculum delivered by highly trained teachers who design engaging and relevant learning experiences. So to that end, our work has centered on the reboot of the Building Leadership Team and Teacher-Based Team Protocol with a focus on learning. Before, the B L T had run somewhat like a building management type of team, so we've brought that focus back to student learning. Each of our academic departments have set goals. A lot of those goals center on mapping and common assessments. Of course, teachers, for the first time, are being evaluated by a new evaluation system that asks them to focus on some areas that they haven't been asked to focus on before. And the other instructional work is around assessment and grading practices, teacher clarity. And then today, after school, Mr. Pelfried, the curriculum coordinator, worked with teachers on the topic of universal design for learning, because we see that as a very important part of teacher clarity. Then the third statement, the third area of focus, we want all students to leave high school with a plan. And I'm working with Leon Armbruster on this as well. We are focusing on the four Es. We want students, you know, as soon as they enter the high school, and maybe even before, I think we're doing some of this work with the eighth graders as well, to be thinking about where they're headed. Enrollment, employment, enlistment, or entrepreneurship. So to that end, we are really working to improve our college career advisory. Later this week and early into next week, our ninth and tenth graders will be building their graduation plans. We're also working to effectively communicate the new graduation requirements that apply to our class of 2023. So that's next year, seniors. And then trying to build connections between the coursework that students are taking and their goals that they state in their plans. So, and again, I know Leon Armbruster is working, you know, we've had a lot of discussion around some pathways and things like that. So those are the three areas of focus. And now I understand, oh, there they are. Teachers work so hard. They've been working so hard. They've had so many new things through this year. That was a holiday meal that we shared together before going into holiday break. So, yeah, so, thank you. Letting you present.
Anybody have any questions for the high school?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about the four Es and the opportunity that presents our students and the fact that we're pushing it down into junior high. We talked about treating every student as an individual. The mayor spoke to it today. The buy-in from everybody, I think our students are going to be well-prepared when they leave our school district for whatever path they choose. And the fact that we're really working to make sure that each student is represented in what their path and their destination looks like, I'm excited beyond belief. So thank you.
You're welcome. Concludes the Superminister's.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move into announcements. Is there any announcements this evening? We'll say, and then we'll move into Hearing of the Public. Here's an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. If you've not already signed in in the hallway, please approach the podium, sign in there, state your name and address, and and if you sign in in the hallway, or?
I did that. Sign in here?
Yeah, please.
Probably thinking, there's an old fella coming up. What does he have to do at the school? And I promise you, this won't be some far out thing.
This is very practical.
Anyway, my name is Casey Lestiak. I am a resident. I live on Chestnut Ridge here in North Ridgeville. And what I will do is I will tell you something about me, something about my experiences at the school this past weekend, an issue that I see that exists, and some recommendations that I have. About me, I I have a bachelor's degree with a major in psychology and a minor in physics. I've got a master's in public administration and a Juris Doctor's degree. I have my own legal practice. I still actively practice, not much, very little. I try to do very little. I have a counsel relationship with a firm in Manton where I do some bankruptcy work. I do some tax work for CPA and the right, and it's not as a tax attorney. It's like a tax prep work. And the reason that brings me here, the job that I have with the city of North Ridgeville. I am a part-time seasonal hourly employee for the city of North Ridgeville for the Department of Parks and Rec. I am the site supervisor for the city for basketball and baseball. And I want to share with you my experience this past weekend in the schools. And like you said, then I will identify what I see as an issue. I did not participate in basketball last year because of COVID stuff. And the first weekend season, which is not this weekend, but the weekend before, I did not participate because I was quarantined with COVID. But this weekend, we had we had twelve games, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. There's two gyms at the high school. There's a main gym and auxiliary gym. And we had games going on from eight until noon, and then two more games in the main gym. And it's me, and there are two scorekeepers who are high school students. One's a freshman, the other one, I think, is a senior. And that's the only representation the city has. The normal custodian Roger was not there, but a fellow by the name of Tom was there, and he was wonderful. He was right in the gym with me. When I got in there, he gave me a walkie-talkie, started to get a hold of him. And it was a wonderful experience. I mean, the whole day was terrific. As you may or may not know, the coaches are all volunteer. They're not paid. And as you may not know, almost all of the people are North Ridgeville residents. All the students, it used to be, I was hired by Frank years back for this job, when he was
One of my best hires, by the way.
Well, he knew attorneys argue with people. But let's see, where was I? The the games used to be, when we were at the middle school, we'd have games from eight until five. And there were like at least thirty communities involved that would come in. And now it's because of COVID, it's very few, I think we've got the only, yeah, the only people, I think it's seventh through ninth grade girls. Those are the only people from outside of the city that come in. And we only have five girls that play in that. So it's a very minor. The rest is all North Ridgeville students. And was the weekend, it was third and fourth and fifth and sixth graders that were in those games. Now, Sunday was a whole different experience. I got to the school like a half hour early because you have to set up and get things, you know, going. And there was nobody to be had. I had a lot of problems getting things started, things weren't set up. And I don't want to get into too many details, but I ended up like, well, I should get into that. They weren't prepared, and it got off to a bad start. And there's never a problem with the students or the children. It's always a problem with parents, sometimes grandparents. But the problem, I think, and this is the issue, the thing that I'm getting to, is that these are school events, or these are events that take place at schools. And these are schoolchildren, but the schools don't really see us as a school event. I mean, I have not felt ever, other than as an intruder, whatever, these things. I mean, the, the way these things go, I develop relationships with the custodians and work through the problems, which is what I'm supposed to do. But there's a disconnect between the school seeing this as a school event, and these are schoolchildren, and it's just like everything else. And if you go on your website, you'll see it's not connected to what's going on at the schools. It's not covered in the recognition things, and I think that's the issue. I know, like Lakewood Parks and Recs is part of, I'm sorry, overseen by the school board, which means that's not an issue. It's an issue here because we're seeing it as separate. And I thought this was a place to come to mention that, especially seeing it's a recognition thing. It's like, if, and I, two recommendations, and I'll be done. First recommendation, this last school board meeting, you had a fellow here who's talking about reworking your website. And they're gonna revamp that in the summer. Well, connecting the Parks and Rec things into the website would be a good idea. I mean, even if you just add a link, it should be part of the calendar. It should be recognized, I think, as, you know, this is a school event. It's not maybe put on by the schools, but it's an event that takes place for the schoolchildren and in the schools. And it's not on the website, and I think it should be, and I think that, that would help. And the other recommendation I have is really more of a request for the people in the schools to see what you can do to see this as being welcomed. I mean, I'm carrying around the scoreboard, it's the basketballs, because there's not a place in this building where we can store the stuff. It's like, and I don't know why that is, it shouldn't be. It should be seen as part of these events, I mean, as part of the schools. And the only way that's gonna happen is if the school people, I mean, the people who are paid, the administrators, and if the school board sees it. And finally, I want to say, if you have an opportunity, attend some of these games. They're terrific, the children are terrific. It, it, it's, it's a really good experience. We probably have 35 people for each of the games in the stands. So this past weekend, there were probably 2,000 people, you know, there. So there's a lot of people, and it's good. I mean, and the children are great, they really are. The high school, we're playing high school games now, ninth through 12, there's no adults. There's no adult coaches, and it's terrific. The kids are terrific, and it's a good experience, it's something to see. And that's all I have. And I do want to thank the school board as well, because, you know, the idea is to give something back to the community, and that's what you do, that's what the coaches do in this. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else this evening? All right, so you're moving to the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented. Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Moving to the financial audit report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial report and report of interest and investments for December 2021. I move to approve this in one reading.
Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by myself. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Yes. Second item we have tonight, board, is a resolution determining to proceed with an additional $5,673,720 tax levy for a period of 10 years. The purpose of providing for the emergency requirements for the school districts to be submitted to the electors of the school district at the May 3, 2022 election, which, if approved, would be first collected in calendar year 2023. I move to approve this financial audit item in one reading.
Second.
Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamira. Was there any discussion?
I just, can I just mention, Mr. Vaca? All the wonderful things that, that Mr. Heffron gave the Board of Education credit for this evening. I, we appreciate and thank you for that. And like Mr. Vaca said, it's easy to support our school district because we have the passionate, dedicated professionals here doing the work day in and day out. I just want to mention with this tax levy, this emergency tax levy, this is part of our job, is to determine when the school district is in need of additional funding to do the amazing things that our staff is doing every day, to allow our students to reach their full potential and to, to design a preferred future. And without this money, we can't do that. So we're gonna be relying on our, on our community, assuming that the board passes this this evening. We're reaching out to our community to share the need for this additional funding, this emergency funding, and, and to hear their questions and, and concerns and to be very transparent. But this is the Board of Education acting fiscally responsible to our community and to our staff and our students, so I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the education report, Ms. Tamira.
Thank you. We have one item to consider. The 2022-2023 North Ridgeville High School Program of Studies has been prepared for adoption. This program of studies has some minor changes updating the course descriptions to reflect new curriculum changes and updates. I move to approve the education report item in one reading. Second.
Move by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions, Mr. Vaca.
Absolutely.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to those who put in the time and diligence to prepare this because it's not easy. It's a very large document with lots of moving parts and lots of details. I had an opportunity to, to review it, and I had some questions, but I apologize for not submitting those further in advance than today. I just submitted them this afternoon. So I just wanted to ask a couple of things before we vote tonight. Page, well, one of the questions I had is on the, for the table of contents, we list contact information for the high school and the administration and the counselors. And I was wondering if we need, and we might not need, but do we need to add contact information for Ranger High Tech Academy on that page as well? That's just a question. You don't need to answer it right now, it's just a thought. Page 14, I guess, goes along with that question. And it says in here, Ranger High Tech Academy is an option for high school students to join that program, and it's an application process. And it says in here, to contact, those who wish to be considered for enrollment should contact the school's office. Again, just clarifying, which school's office is that Ranger High Tech Academy? And if so, can we list their contact information here in this, on this page or in the previous page? Some of the things we're formatting, and I know Mr. Prit will look at those with Miss Laurel when they have time. Page 27, I was asking about summer reading books. Do we know when those?
Those typically become available in the month of May.
Okay, thank you. Do we, how do we communicate to those students taking that, those classes, what their summer reading list is?
So those will be shared out by the English department prior to school ending.
Sorry, I can't see.
Because the English is a course that every student must take for four years. It'll be shared out by the English department in their classes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Will also post on the, on the board.
Thank you. Is Project Lead the Way on page 40, is that now part of continuing with JBS? Are we moving that in-house?
So the current Project Lead the Way courses are courses that we teach in-house and have for a couple of years now. So those will continue to be in-house courses.
Okay. Is that, is that course a multi-year course, or is that a?
So it's a series of a couple of courses that go together. There's a robotics course and a drafting course.
Are those listed separately from Project Lead the Way?
See how we have those. So we've got the introduction to engineering design.
Is it drafting one?
Yes, and then you have a little bit further up is your robotics course.
Okay. And so when students sign up for Project Lead the Way, then they also take those courses along with Project Lead the Way? Or those are incorporated in that?
Through Project Lead the Way. So they are providing the curriculum, much like an AP would provide the curriculum for an AP course.
Okay, thank you. My, my last question was about world languages. And I was just curious, I, when I was looking at prerequisites, it's actually not my last question, because, you know, surprise. When I was looking at prerequisites, it says that students have to have a C+ or better in their English to take a first level of world language. And I was curious why the C+, and I'm, I think, when I read this, that foreign language is required for graduation? Is that required any longer?
It's not for graduation, though. So the C+ is a recommendation I would not consider a prerequisite. So I think what we have.
Oh, did I, did I misread that then? I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that, I missed, I misread that. Okay, and then I guess my last question was page 63.
Yes.
For RHTA, and it says that it's a core class and it's one credit. What does that credit apply to?
So what the RHTA STEM core classes really represent are the, the English course, the math course, science course, social studies course that a student might take because they are integrated. So really, when we have listed it out there, it really should read RHTM STEM English 9, RHTM STEM English 10. As opposed to listing all of those out and doubling the size of our catalog, we've kind of lumped those together because they are reprinted in an integrated fashion. So, and we can certainly provide better clarification, too.
Okay, that, yeah, that one just confused me a little bit because there's several different classes.
Yes.
Right, so one credit wouldn't satisfy all those.
No, they would receive four credits because they would need to register for an ELA of math, science, and social studies.
Right, gotcha. So this isn't, this class isn't actually an extra credit?
Correct.
It's, okay.
Be theirs, taught in that project basis.
Thank you. Thank you, and again, I, my apologies for my late submission, too. That was all my questions.
Anybody else? So the community, this is the handbook. And one of the needs for the new monies is to continue to do the things that we do in this handbook. There's Mandarin Chinese in here, there's American Sign Language. One of our Students of the Month was taking electrical classes as well as cooking classes. The variety we then, we offer our students prepares them for the real world. And I can tell you personally, woodshop is the reason I ended up in construction for most of my adult life. What these kids are learning in the buildings and anything that we can open their world to could be the thing that they choose to do for the rest of their life. And it's these type of things that are in this handbook that is constantly evaluated by our staff. I'm excited and proud of the things that we offer our students. And the fact that we've actually started pushing so much of this stuff back into the junior high level and making it available for them even prior to getting to the high school. So please understand, these are the type of things that we're coming to you as a community and asking for more fun, so we can continue to do these things, add new things, and constantly evaluate what's in the best interest of all our students. If you have a chance, if you don't have kids, take a look at what we're offering our students. I promise you, it looks radically different than when you were in school. I know it does, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you how long I've been out of school, but it's more years than I was in school, so. And the difference that's afforded even for my boys that graduated five, six years ago, it's constantly changing and evolving, and it's to our students' benefit. So please, as we come to you as a community and ask you for money, hear us out, listen to the needs, take a look at what we're doing, and I promise you, there's value for every dollar that you entrust to this school district. Start here, take a look at what's being offered our students, the AP, the curriculum, the opportunity for our students to leave with College Credit Plus classes, done. All these things are done because we have the finances, the resources, and the staff to open up doors for our students. So I wanted to point that out, and I figured tonight's a perfect opportunity with the student handbook. Thank you. You have no idea how much we appreciate your support. Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into Human Resources Report, Ms. Saxon.
We have a few items to consider under the Human Resources Report. One, Certified Staff Leave Replacement, one, Support Staff Appointment, five, NREA Supplemental Contracts, three, Non-NREA Supplemental Contracts, five, Unpaid Volunteer Recognition, three, Support Staff Adjustments, one, Certified Staff Leave of Absence, one, Support Staff Leave of Absence. I move to approve the Human Resources items in one reading.
Move by Ms. Saxon. By Ms. Tamira. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Saxon. This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right, it is recommended to the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employees and matters related to negotiations of public employees. There will be no action to follow.
Move second.
Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamira. Roll call, please.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening.
Thank you for everything.